...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Pillar, would you lead us in a prayer, please?
Sure.
Everyone, please follow their heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank and praise you for the opportunity to gather together this evening to take care of the business of this city. We pray that you watch over all of those folks in our community and beyond as we celebrate the Fourth of July this weekend and that you can watch over folks so that they can be safe and we don't have any unexpected accidents occur within our community. We pray that you watch over the activities that we have tonight, that our decisions and discussions may be pleasing to you and pleasing to the citizens that we represent. In your name we pray. Amen.
Okay, reading and approval of minutes from June nineteenth, please.
Motion to approve and suspend reading.
Motion by Weidrich. Second by Hack. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Thank you. Minutes are approved. Approval of the agenda. Any additions? We added six B here for the truck ordinance. Okay.
Motion to approve is presented.
Motion by Hack.
Second.
Second by Pillar. Discussion. All in favor of approving this agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, we have engineers report. And we don't have Jared or anybody on the line?
No.
Not that we know of, no report for as far as approvals, just basically updates on everything.
So they're still reviewing the TV lines, assuming?
Yeah, they'll have a complete report for us once they're finished, they were hoping, by the mid-month meeting.
And then it looks like things up at Expedition Estates, when builders are going okay when they're not pumping water?
Yeah.
From rain.
How do those folks on your street, Monty, to the east of you, how are they getting, they park over there on the side and then have to truck out, walk all the way over?
They are allowing the homeowners over there to get through.
Okay. I just went on a little drive yesterday and it just looks like a little bit of a mess up there.
I didn't, I didn't know if they were allowing, did I do?
I mean, the signs said local traffic only, but even beyond that, you know, where they had some of the barriers, you really wouldn't want to.
Yeah, if they're not going into their property, most of them are just parking right at the end of the street there.
And they're being at the breast of where the light is at the end of the tunnel?
Probably know where they are.
Okay.
Okay, anybody have any questions they want us to pass on to more? Moving on to five B. ND Street Project Alternatives.
And this is the lighting and the used path from Eleventh to Twelfth Avenue and then the Culver, pedestrian Culver underpass. There were three different alternatives as far as the pedestrian underpass. There's the stop log closure whereby the city would be responsible in case of flooding to install the stop logs to stop any water flow coming from the north to the south. Then there was basically putting a ring around the north side and then adjusting the path on the south side, which would require purchasing property from the school and from the north property owner. That's alternative C. The final alternative was basically doesn't require any purchase of extra property or anything on the south side, but it would make the ring bed larger to keep the ADA accessible path and everything. So it would require purchasing property from the property owner on the north. At this point, the project is a hundred percent state funded. Now, if they have to, there could be some cost to us if they end up, depending on how they do that property. If that one all be determined.
Is it me, like, who was the individual who had made the recommendation within that report that came here? Was that a DOT engineer?
It's an DOT engineer.
And he basically said his choice would be the slide-ins?
Right.
And that if the city were to choose to do anything other than that, any additional cost, would, he would recommend that the city be responsible for those costs?
Yeah, he would recommend that, but yeah, at this point, that's not clear if that would be the actual end result or not.
And I guess I was curious about it, I mean, obviously, we're going through this exercise, but he's the DOT engineer and the talk I hear is they're gonna make whatever decision they ultimately want to make. How much bearing does our discussion have? I guess they don't care if they spend more money on it if the city pays for it.
Yeah.
Depending on how they give you that cost, yeah. Gotcha.
Well, I'm not sure why we wouldn't go with the stop log closure system. Looks like it's less land.
Yeah. You saw the table where it had the pros and cons? The cons would just be the added tasks for the city.
It'd be a couple hours to.
Somebody would have the responsibility of housing those closure planks, making a determination because he said that those things would have to be raised up quite a ways to be able to get them in there and it's highly unlikely. The recommendation was you'd have to have some type of equipment.
A payload, yeah.
And then we would have the scheduled where you would have to validate that it works on whatever predetermined time.
Do we have, we don't have any kind of the other one thing?
No.
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 Because of the rig back there.
Because they did the rig back there.
That works awesome.
Works.
And they say how high you'd have to lift them to slide them in? Did they give any indication of?
I think the opening is at least eight feet, so you'd have to get up over there.
Four eight feet.
They were saying, I think what I read in their report, they mentioned a ladder, so you'd be out there with a ladder, but then they, you would supplement guiding it with the ladder with some type of lift equipment to get it up there because they weren't recommending from a safety standpoint that you carry this thing up, the ladder, and stick it in there.
I was just wondering how it's like if our payloader goes high enough to lift them in or if there'd be something different they'd have to do?
No, I think it would.
A regular payloader would lift them up to the right height.
I don't remember it saying, it didn't say how many logs.
Yeah, I think there were two, two side-by-side planks that would go in there and that they were, they were not heavy, they're just.
Just long and.
North Dakota wind whipping and stuff like that, you know, as the.
Just a quick slide and a hop and exercise them.
Yeah.
Make sure it work.
My first impression was it was gonna be some type of motorized or some type of gate type thing like, you know, the other one further down by the baseball fields, kids' baseball fields where they got cranks or something. But this is fairly simple.
But it's not.
I guess my only concern would be the wind blowing it around when you're in a hurry trying to get those things in there.
Well, generally, I would hope that we have a little bit of warning as far as flooding, that you don't have to, right?
I think so.
All of a sudden do this, then you'll have, you know, even if it doesn't get to that point, you pour them in and.
Yeah.
It doesn't say, I couldn't remember, does it say where there were you, how many times you have to exercise that in a year? How many does, does it?
No. The discussion at the public meeting was once every year or every other year.
Okay.
It wasn't a hundred percent clear, I think.
Yeah.
But it wouldn't be like a monthly thing or anything like that.
I think it would be pretty, so I put the planks on it?
Yeah.
Like on the top of an elk truck or wheels for water damage?
But it said, it said that you would wanna house them someplace internal so that you're not getting the deterioration due to the sun rays and all of that kinda stuff, so we just know where they are.
I think they have a system like that when you come out of Mandant to get on Memorial Highway, you come onto the railroad tracks, you can see the.
Those are big.
They were big, but you can see the steel track that they slide along in there. So we only have that system there.
And it did say in the report, there were questions and answers, that they're not leak proof, but they're not gonna leak to the point where they're gonna cause any detriment to the city. That's where you just wanna take care of them because they do have gasket material on them.
Yeah, the public meeting, they described them almost like a garage door, you know, with the tone and groove type that sets down in there.
So then we have to recognize.
Yeah, we're supposed to make a vote or a recommendation regarding which alternative you'd like and if you have any concerns or do you concur with the project concepts as proposed?
Do they, do they have a picture again where you're just putting the planks down in there as to what the path looked like on the first? No?
I don't believe so.
And I apologize. But I think in that, in that particular offering where they put the planks in, it said there would be no need for land acquisition on either side of the.
Correct.
That would be that one right there. Yep. Cause they would be able to stay within the right of way on the north side to.
We need to run up against that fence though.
Yeah, real close, yeah. The fence is pretty much right behind them.
Okay, how should we respond?
So do we need a motion, please, or?
I would say you'd do a motion to recommend an alternative.
Clearly, the lease cost to the city is where the project covers the entire cost. Now, if you're terminal, might be looking for a day speed back because presumably you and your department or maybe your department.
Between the dual bus or whatever, but the street department, I would say, would be the ones taking care of it.
Okay. You guys are good with that?
I think so. You do also have the option of doing alternative A with no, with no proposed alternative.
And let that be whatever they say.
Right.
Seems pretty evident to me that they're not gonna, they're not gonna recommend something that's additional cost to the city unless the city says they're interested in that.
I'll make a motion to approve a alternative B stop lock.
Okay, a motion by Weidrich.
Second.
Second by Hack. Discussion. Roll call.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
O'Callaghan.
Aye. Motion carried.
And are there any questions, you know, do you concur with the concepts of the project as proposed? Okay.
And there's no changing, changes to lighting?
No.
Stuff, okay.
Other than the removal of the blinking lights that are existing there right now, they would take those off, where you push the button and it all flashes, those would disappear.
Okay, moving on to six A, weed control. Railroad right of way, this is Mr. Link. Inquired about this and that is the railroads. You can see part of it's been taken care of. And I'm not sure if that's the homeowner that did that or if that's, if they're just selective spraying by the railroad, but Tammy did try to contact the railroad and just inquired, says, we don't want to get it spraying back. We don't have that kind of money to go from. Yeah.
Hold on, is it still fifty feet from the center?
I want to say it's seventy-five feet.
And there's a road board at seventy-five.
I'm pretty sure that entire alley is there.
Alley is.
Right away. He's, Cam was part of it, I believe that's part of it.
So we are, we are looking into that and trying to contact the railroad. Did Mr. Link say, Monty specifically, if he just?
No. Not. Again, I would enter some assistance.
Maybe the spots up there.
Maybe there's some context that the city has.
Alley up by nights, I'm assuming that's up by nights. It's like.
Okay. Moving on.
I got one question.
Yes, sir.
Do we as a city have the right to, since it runs through our city, say, hey, you know, why have we got, have it up just spray abouts and not the home works or?
Well, I think that looks like it's to the property line and the homeowner, so it's almost like.
I mean, this down here looks like somebody sprayed it themselves.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
But like all that kosher. I don't know, I don't know if we have a right to, as a city, to tee them with that a little bit deeper to the railroad and say, hey, sprayer.
We could maybe move it to the county and ask them.
I don't. Do we have any more teeth to that, Pat, to move this along?
The railroad doesn't care what it says.
Yeah, I don't, I don't. Don't they helicopter spray in other areas?
I don't, I don't know, Pat.
I don't believe they do through town and I think they have a concrete sprayer that comes through town. I know everything else they helicopter spray, yeah.
But Tammy did leave a message, so hopefully.
We'll keep trying to comment on them.
Okay, six B, truck parking ordinance and enforcement. Go ahead, Casey.
So I guess it'll pass like a month now. You'll you'll tell them you're with a frac sand and then you need some semis and stuff, you know, there's more and more, and I see them in town here overnight, over on the streets. And the guys that I, then I guess I spoke to, and they claim that they didn't know, I guess they didn't know that we had, I guess, a truck parking here in town. You know, and two, there's a couple of these guys that are in town. On the trailers of them, I guess, trailers and I guess loaded, you know, you know, they're leaving it there overnight.
I have seen them up by the Dollar General, dolly down to the.
Yeah, that's not good.
They go down right on that perimeter over there, left for the private hovel. I've seen him park the opposite direction down there too. There's one truck that I know he was loaded, he parked there for four days and a week.
Yeah, that's a popular area, down by your shop, that's a popular area, around Senex, they like to be on the street there as well. Some nights, there'll be three, four of them parked behind the theater, around the theater on Senex's property as well, so, you know, that's, that, we really can't say much about private property, but on our streets, you know, we, I thought at one time we talked to the police department, I thought we had make a form to give them, to give truckers to say, here's, here's our rules, here's where you can park, but.
Unfortunately, I couldn't find anything prohibiting truck parking other than our forty-eight dollar parking codes. We do have ordinance against the weight of trucks on the streets, so that would be the only one, but there again, then if they don't have a scale ticket, how do we?
Right.
I know, I spoke to Jim about it a little bit after I got Commissioner Stern's email and said, you know, we gotta start looking at these and at least contacting them to make them aware of the truck parking, and that's probably pretty soft at times too, but.
It's actually, you know, even after that two inches of rain I was out there, it is thirty.
Well, we hung that Scorpio out there that year, you had us, it scored on with grass and Scorpios there and that was still pretty firm, pretty good.
Pretty good. And there's plenty of room to turn around out there and.
I did notice on twenty-seven coming in, both from the north and the south, there is signs up on twenty-seven saying designated truck parking areas only, but it's not, there's no signs on two hundred.
DOT will let us.
DOT will.
I think we put signs out there and they took them down, 'cause I remember hanging them up.
That makes sense?
Doesn't make sense, but that's what happened.
Yeah.
So then if we wanna do something to prohibit truck parking overnight, then we need to update our ordinance. Okay.
You know, two, I don't mind if the guys are tired, you know.
Yeah.
You know, and just needs to sleep, you know, you know. You know, with this stuff, it just, you know, every day and stuff, those frac mines, it'll never close down anytime soon, so. Or the sand mines, sorry.
I think I'll try to contact them again as well to make sure that everybody's sort of aware, you know, we do have truck parking in town, where it is so that they can share that and get to, see if that helps a little bit.
I think between that and probably our law enforcement, walking on doors or making it more formidable.
Yeah, just saying, yeah, exactly.
Cause you have that aqua green one that parks over there by foundation. That's a hopper bottom, but I think they're hollowing hopper bottom.
Truckers. The gray trailer?
Yeah.
He kinda lives around it and noticed him.
Yeah.
I don't know if he's been talked to already, but he kinda jumps around town. He's making sure he's not.
And then two, I got a question about that block that's over by the city shop. So over there, over in the city shop on the south side, where there's now a sign that says, I guess, like private, private park, private.
Across the road?
Yeah.
That Bloom's Builders, that's their land, that's their land.
Where they've got some of the road equipment and stuff like that right now, no?
So I thought that I guess part of the deal was that on that land, that spot, that if they weren't gonna build there, the guy was gonna go back to us or something like.
I'd have to look at that agreement again, but I know where they are in talks with someone about building there, so I don't know what they agreed on that, how long they had to build. I'll have to look at that.
I didn't think so, but. Okay, moving on to six C. Local permit raffle for fire and iron. Steven Schwartz.
Did you ever stop there?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Pat.
Can you grab the paper for Dan again?
Okay, moving on to reports, nine A, water, sewer, garbage.
Okay, had some conversations with Dave, received information back, our garbage truck is back in full service, transmission is all taken care of, there was some oil leaks that Dave took care of, changing all some parts on, so that's, we're all back in business there. One of the things as we prepare for our budgets moving forward, the radio units that are out on our residential properties for water consumption, for the water meters, those are coming to end of life. And the folks that represent those units had indicated that right now, if you were to purchase them tomorrow, you're looking at a year and a half out. And that's about, it's about the time that, that these will be expiring and I don't know if they shut off or if that's just, you know, like anything else has an end of life.
They'll shut off if they got a non-replaceable battery, you know, so on time, they're supposed to start going dead. I think we have one yesterday that actually died a little bit early.
So to give a little bit of perspective as to what we're looking at, where we as a city would be looking at about twelve hundred units at about a hundred and ninety dollars apiece. So that ends up adding up to what about?
Two hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
Two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, so it's not a, it's not chump change in terms of what is necessary, we don't wanna get back into the habit of having meter readers running around and.
And I suppose there would be some kind of a labor on how we'd have to get them installed, whether our guys tried to install them or homeowners?
Yeah, I don't remember what we did last time.
I don't know what they did initially.
We heated on the outside of our house before and then they came and somebody installed it inside the house at the water meter and so I don't remember how we allocated that, but that'll be two things we need to look at, the cost for equipment for that and then also we'd have to understand what the labor is, so if it's gonna be an outside contract to do that work, that we allocate some funds in our budget for that.
So that's something we need to do, decide that quickly.
Yep. Well, and I bring it up now because Monty had indicated he's gonna start working on getting the budget put together, the preliminaries, so that we can look forward on that. And then we, we did have the water team, we have one of our lift stations that is not tied into any kind of monitoring at this particular point, alarm system. The float on that was giving a blinking red light out there that we had a problem. We do have this on our capital improvement project list. It's just something that I'm throwing out there that I don't remember exactly where it was on that list, but again, as we discuss budget, maybe we want to look at, at a minimum, maybe a couple of these stations that don't have anything right now to at least maybe use those as starting points. Yep, as we go forward. All right. And then the last thing, just to throw out there, just to kinda plant the seed for maybe some future discussion, I did have a citizen contact me with regard to the rolling garbage cans that most, all of our residents have in town and what the, what the rules are in terms of the placement of those things, if they, they have to be off the boulevard when it's not before or right after trash days. And we do have, our ordinance out there does reflect on that a little bit and I, but it doesn't have any kind of teeth in it saying that if you don't put your trash can up by your house, you're gonna not get trash for three weeks or anything like that. And I'm not suggesting we go down that path, but maybe just in general, you know, put out a request to the citizens similar to cutting the grass and just helping everybody out to have a nice community. You know, it's nice if, when people go for walks and they walk on the sidewalk, that they don't have to walk by stinky garbage cans every time they go down particular streets and stuff like that. I did go and do a little bit of an inventory yesterday in the areas of the town that don't have trash removal until Wednesday or Friday and I've got a pretty, pretty good sized list of trash cans that are out there. I know we got a lot of things to deal with and enforce within the cities and this may be somewhat trivial, but if we can just kinda get the word out and plant the seed that it'd be nice if you just take that trash can and put it up by your house when it's not trash day.
You know, on Fridays, so, you know, people are gone for weekends, sometimes they don't get back until Monday or.
Yeah, and I mean, there's, there's a lot of, as I would look at it, legitimate reasons. I go out of town, I don't have any friends, okay, so I don't have anybody to ask to take out my trash can or something. I put out my trash can before I leave, when I come back, I'll take it back up to the house, you know, I get it, but sometimes it's not always left out there for those type of reasons.
Between Facebook and our city app, would that reach a lot of people, you think, are you ready?
Yeah, I think so. Certainly prompts a lot of conversation out there, not always favorable conversation, but sometimes entertaining conversation.
Sometimes.
Okay, that's all I have tonight.
Thanks, Dan. Streets Cemetery.
Oh, we got really nothing outlandish other than Dave and I were talking beforehand, which Monty said I won't, won't have to pick up, it's just a bunch of stuff that we need to to look at, you know, between payload tires to maybe upgrade mower because we're high on hours, stuff like that that we'll probably look at. And Monte's already aware of of doing that. We're going tires for all the trucks. These three caps he's still sending, but the big ticket items is payload tires. That last one. Outside of that, maybe anything else that?
No, everything is going good. We're staying on top of the mowing. We've done some pre-trimming or whatever is needed to rise or, you know, anything dangerous we're going to take care of, so.
Ditches look good. Other than where there's cattails starting to grow.
Yeah, we need to get the water well away.
Just, just a general question, because we did talk about it in our last meeting here about lots that haven't been mowed and they get letters and all of that type of stuff. In general, Dave, how much of that is the city doing right now? Because I feel sometimes that we have citizens that it's just an expectation that the city takes care of those delinquent lots and stuff like that.
They sent out some letters and some right after, before the people even got the letter, they actually did take care of it. So we've only done one so far this year. It's actually been really good.
As we talked about in our last meeting, you know, we, we don't want to be in the business of mowing lawns. And do you, do you remember, Monte, we had gone through a rise or a raise of that cost per hour charged, a hundred dollars per man.
Are you sending two guys over to do that when you do that, Dave?
Yes, usually two. It was a big enough lot we sent. I sent two.
And they're there at least an hour.
Yeah, I think the last one, two guys, that one we did, I think they had about two and a half hours into it.
So they're packing four or five hundred bucks.
Well, I noticed on, on Divide Street up there, there's a series of townhouses that appear to no longer being mowed, being mowed by the city. That's a positive thing. I think sometimes money.
Yeah, he lets it get tall, but he has been taking care of it.
Just, just before the city were to go after it, so.
I know when Monte was still on commission, Tammy showed me, it was a stack party that I asked to look at the pictures of Jerry and Monte. And a lot of those, I could vouch because I drove around that following weekend.
Yeah.
I got one right through the northwest. There was one on the northeast corner of town that I asked Monte about tonight that so anyway.
We actually, I think, had a better response this year than we did last time.
I would.
Hundred bucks an hour for two people, so every hour is costing you two hundred dollars. That's, that's got some bite to it.
And then if anybody was questioning, they did, because I asked Dave, I saw our writers mowing ditch one day and we had waiting on belts.
We were waiting some parts on the big mower, yeah.
And we did more, that's why we were out there in the ditch for more than two days because I was.
But that's, I saw it in operation the other day, correct?
Yep, it's been up most of the week here on.
Speaking of payload tires, how about payloaders?
That would be.
Where's, where are we at for age of our oldest?
John Deere's the oldest one. I think that's about a they got it, I think, the year before I started. So that's going to be like a two thousand one, two thousand two, something like that.
That was right around two thousand.
Two thousand odd or whatever. The case, the case was bought the year George retired. He'd ordered that. So, yeah, we should plan on replacing the deer.
Maybe look at that Monte this year, then if we can, maybe for sure next year. Is that fair?
It's, we're talking twenty-four, twenty-five. Fair, fair to have a conversation about it.
Yeah, we need to have a conversation. That's important.
So we're talking a hundred and fifty thousand or?
One quarter.
So then for this coming winter, do we, do we need to send that deer off just to get totally looked at really well so we don't?
We did that. I was looking at the receipt. It was the, just before the transmission got damaged that time, we'd had new injectors put in it and had some of the high hour maintenance done to it, so it is actually pretty well ready. If anything would go now, it would be just something out of the ordinary, just something big just because of age.
The other thing, thanks for bringing it up, Jerry. I did ask Dave before meeting about Free and looking at the stress cracks in the blades and the snow gate. I didn't know this, but Free's down there, one man man. And he is going to be doing, looking at price of their gate floors, making gate. This just hasn't gotten to him.
Yeah, he got, I had him come to the shop and he looked at them to refurbish both of them. There's nothing wrong with the plow just have stress practice. It don't pay to buy a new claw, but he's going to put a rest together on building the snow gate.
And then the wine washroom, that remains?
Yeah, that one's been sold.
All right. Thank you. Finance bussing library. Please fire Forestry.
Okay, police department. We had a hundred and thirteen runs last month. Which twenty of them were officer buyers, twenty-five were from Officer Anthony Melberg. Thirty-seven of them were from Officer Samantha Melberg. Thirty-one of them are Officer Wolf, Chief Wolf, sorry. Fire department, we had two runs this last month. Since the last meeting, one was being electrocuted and one was mutilated with Stanton for a house fire. I don't know anything about either of them. I didn't get involved with it, with the house fire. They were there for quite a while.
That was out in the country.
Yeah. That got paged out at five thirty in the morning, if I remember right, and at ten, they asked for mutilate for Dula. They must've had to do some major overhaul in the inside of it or area they couldn't get to or something. But I haven't talked to Cory about that one yet. That's all I got for now.
Thank you. Okay, Buster's not here and I have nothing to report under the president. Moving on to eleven A website hosting. Monte?
Okay. I'm not real certain. I didn't read too closely as far as the discussion on the website hosting of Catalyst. They did send us the new agreement, which they did reduce their cost by one thousand dollars. So the first year will be thirty-nine ninety-five and then it still increases six percent each year for the next three years. That would include a whole rewrite of our website if we wanted it in year one and year four. Plus then they have other enhancements that they, that could be neat as far as the mapping and those types of things, where we can include that on our website, G I S map and then we're using the Maintain X software as far as calls and issues from water service or trees or whatever. But this would, we supposedly can tie this in then with that as well, so that citizens could then just go online, put in their concern and so. And there, there is some benefit to the extra cost. Granted, it's a lot of extra cost compared to the thousand dollars that we were spending per year before.
What we were paying for before though, were they obligated to update things?
No.
Okay.
Okay, what would the board like to do?
A lot of money, but I think we definitely need to update our web labels.
Yeah.
Extremely outdated.
Yeah, I want to take this off of my.
There are, there are ADA compliance issues with our website currently as well, which needs getting a little addressed to make sure.
Make a motion to approve this.
Motion by Weidrich.
Yeah, motion would include a rewrite of the webpage from the first year.
Correct.
Okay, motion by Weidrich.
Second.
Second by Hack. Discussion.
Yeah, I think that's, that's one of the important things. It sounds to me like we're not paying any more, we're not paying any less. If we, if we just tell them to move forward, we want to make sure that we do get the latest and greatest in there.
Yes.
Give a fresh, fresh look. We must spend that kind of money. Get something forward we're paying for.
Any more discussion? Rule call.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
O'Conner.
Aye. Motion carried. All right, down to new business, twelve A fire department helmet purchase. Keith.
So Cory asked me to bring this up to you guys. He's requesting six thousand dollars to replace our helmets. They're currently eighteen years old and according to NFPA standards, they can be no more than ten years old. So we're almost double what they're supposed to be. We didn't realize that they caught that in that ISO audit stuff. So we did talk to the rule board. Rule board agreed they'll cover six. He's requesting six from the city and the fire department will cover two thousand of their own money. So I'd like to make a motion to give them the six thousand dollars to purchase the helmets.
Second, motion by Weidrich, second, we have to have discussion. Where'd we take that out of, Monte?
They'll come out of their line item.
Okay, and we, there's money there.
Yeah, that's a, that's a big liability out there for everybody involved.
It's just one of those things that we've been getting new gear, but helmets have always just kind of been overlooked for some reason.
You know, you, you see that out in the industrial customers, you know, industrial facilities as well, all of a sudden. You know, and it's like, whoops, we missed out on that. We better make sure. We, we don't want to be that, that city that somebody gets their, their noggin craft or something and it's really bad.
Here, we have a motion and we have a second. Any more discussion? Rule call.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
O'Conner.
Aye. Motion carried. Put steel in those, those things? Put the steel in those there? Not that kind of helmet?
No.
All right. Have a comment. Approval of the bills. Monte has a few more here that emailed us.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Hack. Second by Stern. Discussion. Rule call.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Weidrich.
Aye.
O'Conner.
Aye. Motion carried. We need a journey. Thank you. Thanks, Pat.
Nice to see you, Pat.